Good afternoon, everyone. I call today's facilities planning and management meeting for order. Welcome back, everyone. I would like to welcome our newest member, Professor Kate Conway, to the committee. Thank you for your service. To get started, I'd like -- I will accept a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
So move, second.
Great, thank you. All right. On the policy calendar, we have four items. These are items that are requiring action, and I'll now turn it over to Vice Chancellor.
Thank you. If it's okay with you, Madam Chairperson, I am going to do the master plan for Brooklyn College at last.
Okay.
And we'll go through the action items first because we're going to have a presentation on the Brooklyn College master plan. So the first item for consideration has to do with Brooklyn College regarding their TV studio, and this would authorize the execution of a construction and equipment installation contract on behalf of Brooklyn College for reconstruction of their TV studio production facility in Whitehead Hall. Clearly, the technologies over the last decades have really upgraded TV production, and it's gone through a revolutionary change in the past few years. And so the college would like to replace all of its current studio equipment with new state-of-the-art digital equipment. The college will also have to construct the studio facility infrastructure to accommodate these new technologies and to bring them into compliance with current building codes. So that is the second item on the list. The third item, people, folks on this committee have probably seen this item before, but we're coming back to the board because this project has changed a bit. It's to authorize a ground lease and associated financial instruments for construction and management of a student housing facility at the College of Staten Island of approximately 458 beds. The chancellor and the president of CSI have determined that providing a residence facility on the campus would promote and enhance the educational mission of the college and the university. This facility will be located on a site on the north campus to be leased from DASNY to the CSI Auxiliary Services Corporation, and the operation and the management of this facility will be arranged by a separate development and management agreement between the CSI entity and American campus communities. I might point out to the committee that they have seen this item before, and it was a larger project. We had originally envisioned well over a 600-bed facility at the College of Staten Island, and I think as members of this committee know, just as we were getting ready to finalize this project, the economy took a turn for the worse, and we had to regroup, and it's taken us a while to really work with both the college and American campus communities to come up with a project which we think is viable now. And so the project has been scaled back some. We've now only have 458 beds, and we believe now interest rates have come down far enough that the economy of this project will work both for the students and for the campus. So we're coming back with this one. And we had an item that was added on, and it's a project on behalf of the Hunter College This project would authorize the City University Construction Fund to accept construction-related administrative fees from Hunter College for its services in connection with the construction and renovation of the Wexlow Library. And I just want to point out that there's a correction we'd like to make, that the fees will not be imposed on this project, but we will be going ahead with the project. On behalf of Hunter, CUCF will be doing the reconstruction of the library. Hunter received a gift, or rather substantial gift, from a donor, and CUCF will really take care of all the design and construction-related activities with this project. So those are those items, and I'd like to now turn back to the first item on the agenda, which is...
Before we do that, are there any questions on the three items that Vice Chancellor has? Yes?
Just a quick one. On the Brooklyn College TV studio, I see it's planned to take place during the spring semester, but I don't see any mention, will the existing facility be renovated, and will they be able to utilize the existing equipment, or be shut down during the semester?
Yes.
The existing, we're able to utilize, but we're getting new equipment.
Right. Is it true, it's true the equipment that's there now is about 20 years old?
Yeah, well, yes.
Yeah, so it's not much use.
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'll move the three items.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Those three items pass. Thank you.
So the next item is a project that we've been working on for, I guess, well over two years, as the provost has pointed out. This is a new master plan for Brooklyn College. The last master plan was adopted in 1995, and clearly, the college's needs have really changed dramatically over the last decade, and there's been really a revolution in technologies for both instruction, as well as research, and faculty and student support. So this new master plan includes strategies to develop and accommodate these changes that have happened. I want to introduce Jeanne Gaff, who is the planner that was retained by the university. She works for Pfeiffer Partners, and that name may sound familiar to you because Pfeiffer Partners was the firm that has designed the new Performing Arts Center at Brooklyn College, which we have started construction on. But the college has been working very closely with Pfeiffer and with Jeanne, and I'd like to have her now make a presentation on the new master plan for Brooklyn College.
Thank you very much. We're really pleased to be here. I'll make this relatively brief. I know all of you have been given a copy of a handout of the overall master plan, but I wanted to just highlight a few key issues. I want to talk a little bit about the process that we went through to get to the master plan, the qualitative and quantitative analysis that we did, a little bit about the campus itself, and then about the building systems, and then finally about the change in nature of education and how the master plan addresses that, both in the short term and the long term. As many of you know, this is one of the older campuses within the community system. It was established in 1930, and I thought what was interesting was at the time of the dedication, Franklin Roosevelt said that the project is about improving the educational facilities of this great borough, not just for today, but for generations to come. And I think that's our mission here, is not just about the short term, but also thinking about how this master plan can address long-term the needs of both the community and the broader New York area. Since the campus was open in 1930, over the past 90 years, a lot of things have changed. Students have changed, demographics have changed, presidents have changed, and this master plan was really under the direction of President Gould. And what's also important that happened at the same time as this is the campus switched over to the dean structure, and with that was the establishment of five schools. So it was a great opportunity in the master plan to address some broader categorical changes that we're going on on the campus. I don't know how many of you know, but this campus was inspired by Jefferson and the development of the University of Virginia, both in terms of the Georgian architecture, but I think more importantly, in terms of the open space. And I think the contribution that Jefferson made, both here and at other campuses, was really about the landscape. And unlike the buildings intended to deteriorate over time, the landscape has been very much of the campus, very much a part of the campus, and has actually matured and is very valued, both to the students and faculty alike. Since the 1930s, a lot of things have changed. The neighborhood around Brooklyn College has changed. It's gone through a series of different development and economic cycles, but the campus itself has remained pretty much intact, surrounded as it is by predominantly residential neighborhood with some commercial development along Flatbush. What we found interesting, where we really started this assignment, was with the students themselves, a population of about 16,000 students. They represent 100 different nations, and they speak 95 different languages, so it continues to be a very diverse community. A significant number of the students are born outside of the U.S., and these are students who are extremely well-educated. Fifteen percent of them are in the top of their graduating class. So it's a very rich, ethnic, and educationally diverse student community. The faculty is equally as prominent. Many of them are leaders in their field, nationally acclaimed, most hold advanced degrees. So we have a very interesting mix of both the student population as well as the faculty population. All of you who are in education know that education is changing. It's becoming much more interdisciplinary, much more collaborative, much more interactive, students learning from one another, multimedia-based. So all of these things influence our thinking about what the master plan should do, both for the buildings and the spaces within the buildings. What struck us as particularly impressive when we started this effort was looking back at the 1995 master plan and the degree to which the college has been able to systematically implement that master plan over the past 15 years. Examples of that are the expansion and the renovation of the LaGuardia Library, the recent completion of the West Quad Building, the Leonard E. Clark House Performing Arts Center, which we're designing and is currently under construction. So the master plan has really served the college very well over the past 15 years, and we intend for this master plan to do a similar job in terms of setting the framework for the next 15 to 20 years of improvements. So while the college has made great strides, over 70% of the academic space on campus is in buildings over 80 years old, and you'll see in a few of these pictures, many of the spaces in those buildings has barely been touched over the past 80 years. Those that aren't that old are about 40 years old, so it's clear that it is a set of facilities that are in need of upgrading and modernization. A couple of the buildings have been slated for demolition. Roosevelt Hall, which was the original gymnasium on campus, will soon be demolished to make way for the Science Building, Phase One Science Building, and the Gershwin Hall, which frames College Road, will be demolished in part to make way for the new Performing Arts Center. So some of the older buildings are being torn down, replaced by some of the newer ones. But what is, sticks in people's mind and is very important ingredient of this campus is the open space and the landscape. And when the master plan jumped across the road, across Bedford, the organizing element among the West Quad was also open space and landscape. So as we're thinking about the master plan, we're thinking not only about the placement and organization, configuration of buildings, but also how we can use those buildings to reinforce the open space. We had a team of engineers that worked with us that looked at the mechanical system, the electrical system, the structures of these buildings. As we say, the buildings themselves have good bones. Structurally, they are very sound. However, their floors are a little ratty, and their inside workings need hip replacements. So there needs to be a series of upgrades for the mechanical system, certainly looking at sustainability, as well as the electrical and plumbing. So while the buildings are in relatively good shape and have been very well maintained, many of the systems need to be replaced. As I mentioned, some of these buildings are 80 years old. As you can see on the lower right, that classroom is probably close to 80 years old and doesn't nearly reflect the type of education and the delivery of education that we're finding today on other campuses. There's also just basically care and upgrade, and the need for more social spaces on campus. To make sure we fully understood the extent of these needs, we looked at the campus in two ways. One was quantitative, from a square footage analysis, what does the campus provide today? How does that stack up relative to other community campuses, as well as statewide campuses? But we also did a qualitative analysis, so we had a lot of input. We had town hall forums, we had faculty senate meetings, we had input boxes on the college's website to make sure that we understood not just the numbers, but the quality of the campus and what students and faculty thought were important. No surprise, what seems like most about the campus was the landscape and the open space, the lily pond, the library was a very popular spot, the new Athletic Center is also very popular. But what students felt was needed most was renovation, the interior renovation of the great old buildings, and also somewhere along the line of bathrooms. I think that always comes up, whether it's a new building or old building, everybody wants better bathrooms. The other thing that came up, and this was immediately apparent, and it was one of President Gould's high priorities, was the need for social spaces. Since this is primarily a commuter campus, there's very few places for students to gather, the board class, center class, to work together collaboratively. And that came up over and over, both on the part of the faculty as well as the students. The faculty and staff had very similar impressions of the campus. Everyone loved the landscape, the open space. What they needed was more space and better space, improvements to the interior spaces, signage, and the opportunity to come together as faculty to collaborate. In one of our workshops, the things that we heard were from the faculty, different configurations so that we could deliver education in the way it is being delivered elsewhere on campus, and student study spaces. That represented qualitatively. The quantitative analysis demonstrated that the campus currently has about 1.39 million net square feet of space, and it needs about 1.41 million, only a delta of 200,000 square feet. When you tear down the Roosevelt Hall, that represents about another 200, so about 400,000 net square feet. So it's not quantity of square footage that's important on this campus. It's really the quality of the square footage and the need for renovation. While we're looking at this at an overall perspective, we also spend a lot of time focusing on what it means to switch over to the structure of having deans and the five schools. The School of Business fell incredibly short in terms of square footage, has only about 6,500 square feet to offer the program. The School of Natural and Behavioral Sciences, part of that need will be addressed within the Phase One Science Building, but it too has a shortfall, as does School of Humanities and Social Services, School of Education, and School of Visual, Media, and Performing Arts. So all of them have a shortfall in space. But there's also sort of the non-quantifiable, which is the student spaces, not only student organization spaces, but lounges, hangout spaces, and the West Quad has helped in that, but there's still a significant deficit as it relates to student space. These two graphs, or this graph represents the two primary drivers of the master plan. The first is the schools, the classrooms and offices necessary for those five schools, and the other is the support spaces. Support spaces, everything from library to administration to athletic facilities, all of the things that are necessary to make those in the yellow band work efficiently. I mentioned the shortfall in square footage. This is just diagrams that by 2020, the college will need about 200,000 square feet plus the square footage it loses when the buildings are demolished. So where do these buildings go? Those items, those areas in orange represent potential building sites. This one right here is the current site of the Roosevelt Hall. It will be demolished to make way for the Phase One Sciences Building, as well as another building site. There's a little area along Campus Road next to Whitehead Hall that could be a building site. This site is a combination of existing land owned by the college and newly acquired land, and that certainly offers an opportunity for new building. And then back in the, what some call the back end of the campus, but if you come from Avenue H, it's really one of the other front doors of the campus, there's opportunities there. So we looked at the opportunities for new construction. What was happening concurrently with the master plan, which added additional emphasis to our efforts, was the college was undergoing a strategic plan. And I think master plans are at their best when they're able to help realize some of the broader strategic issues. And in the case of Brooklyn College, we looked at five strategic objectives that had physical ramifications, outstanding educational experience for students, capitalize on Brooklyn as a learning environment. And we took those and we translated them into five goals for the master plan. They were emphasize students as the focus of the Brooklyn College experience, foster interaction both between students and students and between students and faculty, that is part of creating these new schools, to bring image and identity to each of the schools so that they're visually prominent in people's minds as locations, promote collaboration between departments, and activate the two major landscape quads of the campus. So those were some goals that we looked at as key to the master plan. And starting with the schools, right now, the schools are scattered diagrammatically as you see here. Little bits and pieces of the various five schools are in all different buildings on campus. So one of our goals was let's take those, reorganize the existing buildings, so that each school can be identified to a building or two buildings, and that that would bring some clarity to that, some collegiality to that, you know, and then would help students to identify, as well as faculty, with their individual school. What we did, and you'll see here, is we identified potential locations for those schools. And I'll start with the first, being the new School of Business. That is one of the programs that has a fair amount of interaction with the community. It's a good community interface. It could have some commercial components as part of it. So we said, well, that would be an appropriate location for this site along Avenue H. The humanities and social sciences are at the very core, both pedagogically as well as physically, to the liberal arts education, and they want to remain at the core. So we've suggested they stay in Boylan Hall and may expand as necessary into a future building adjacent to the Phase One Sciences. This is Phase One Sciences, new construction. The School for Natural and Behavioral Sciences will consist both of that, as well as a renovation of Ingersoll Hall, and we've begun to look at how that might be achieved within the framework of the existing building. Education is primarily located in James Hall. Again, that's one that has a community interface. It actually literally has two front doors, so we're suggesting that that become the home of education. And the arts really want to be distributed. They want to be part of everything in a liberal arts education. So we are suggesting that they continue to be a distributed model, the new Performing Arts Center here, existing Whitman Hall here, Whitehead, you heard a little bit about the studios, the new equipment there, and to continue the visual arts here to be a distributed model. So each of the schools has a clearly defined plan for their physical relocation. The other thing that was very important was the social spaces, making sure that each building also had social spaces and that those spaces were clearly identified, easily accessible, places for students to come together and be a part of the community, taking some of the student organization spaces, student services, and making them immediately visible by putting them on either the first floor or the second floor of these buildings. So no matter where you go in these buildings, at the ground floor, you have student services that helps orient students and make students the focus of the overall experience. The third thing was to use the quads and use the programs and activities of the building to activate the quads so that they could be activity areas, particularly during the fall and spring. There are wonderful landscape environments, the idea of having cafes or activity that can spill out into the quads, would both activate the quads and extend the amount of social space from indoors to outdoors. And then reinforce the West Quad. While the West Quad physically has been defined, it doesn't have all of the landscape character quality that the East Quad has. And so part of this is to, part of the recommendation is to make this a very key place of the campus and to look at activities and programs that might help frame this West Quad. Bedford is a very busy road. One of the things that makes the East Quad so successful are these wings of the building that help to enclose it, and we're suggesting something similar occur on the west side of the building, or the west side of the campus. Sustainability, it's hard to imagine talking about a campus or building facilities today without addressing sustainability. So working with Era, our environmental consultant, we came up with a number of sustainable measures that can be implemented incrementally over time in existing buildings, in new buildings, things as small and as modest as bio swales, two-channel water, other things, green roofs, blue roofs on existing buildings. So a whole host of things that as the college is making incremental improvement, they can also improve the level of sustainability on campus. We vetted this master plan on a number of different occasions. We had a working committee, and then we had a steering committee. The steering committee was the upper management of the campus. The working committee had a lot of faculty, staff, and students. We also had town hall forums. We wanted to make sure that not only did the administration buy into this master plan, but also the faculty, because they ultimately were, will inherit this and the types of spaces that are provided. So we did a number of town hall forums about the master plan itself and incorporated their recommendations, all of which, all of the comments were very supportive, particularly of the notion of giving each of the schools a new home, an identity and image, and also in terms of making students the focus of the experience at Brooklyn College and providing more social spaces for them to come together and to come together with faculty. We recognize that this is a long-term master plan. It involves a tremendous amount of money. Not everything can happen at once. The campus has to continue to remain operational, so we've developed a phased strategy. The phasing may change depending on needs and financial considerations, but currently we have outlined what we would see as a phased incremental implementation for the campus. This right here is the new Performing Arts Center, which is under construction. This building right here is the Phase One Science Building, which is currently in design. These that are crosshatched are high priorities. That would be the renovation of Ingersoll Hall to make better space for the sciences and potentially a new School of Business. And then more long-term would be the opportunity to potentially expand James Hall, to do an extension to Whitehead, and to improve the central plan. So all of these are phased out over a period of years, such that within the next 15 to 20 years, if the money is available, the campus could once again be transformed. The money, it is expensive. There's probably about $500 million in terms of improvements, but when you think about that, that's basically treating all of the 1.9 million square feet of space that the campus has. So it's a lot of space. When you look at the dollars themselves, they are not overly extensive in terms of the cost per square feet. There's just a lot of square footage to address. So we've outlined them in terms of each of the buildings, renovation, any new construction, any sustainability features that they might have. And then we've also outlined the cost for landscape improvements, some of the civil infrastructure improvements that will also need to be made, and those total approximately another $10 to $15 million. The campus is certainly transforming. It's transformed itself considerably from the 1930s, and it will continue to transform itself over time as these improvements are made, starting with the Performing Arts Center, the Phase One Science Building, Ingersoll, School of Business, such that by the year 2020, the campus, we believe, will have achieved its long-term opportunities. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Thank you.
Is there any chance that Bedford Avenue could be closed so that the two quads could be stitched together?
If I can answer that question, the answer is probably not.
Because that would be a very good thing for Brooklyn College.
The problem with Bedford is that it's a bus route there, and so the likelihood that the city of the MTA would agree to that is very, very small. And they wouldn't even let you put a bridge over that street if you wanted to, because it is a bus and truck route, so.
It would certainly make a tremendous difference.
You would.
Although they have in Flushing Meadows Corona Park, there is an arch. Because obviously you'd be concerned about handicapped access, you'd have to go about two and a half stories.
And you'd also have to have the ability to, on the ground side, to be able to get...
To elevate it, to elevate it gradually.
Exactly.
Talk a little bit about the athletic facilities. The baseball diamond is obviously a big piece of outdoor space, and I'm wondering to what extent, how much usage it gets, and what looks like there were tennis courts on the previous slides now seem to be covered over.
Okay, this is actually a softball field, and it's always a trade-off between sports and athletics and building sites. And what we're suggesting is, long-term, to potentially relocate the tennis courts. It's a major part of the program at Brooklyn College. It could be on rooftops. But it was felt by the campus and the college that some amount of open space was important in terms of active recreation, that we complement the activities that go on inside the West Quad Building. Do you want to add anything?
Do you want to add that it also serves soccer?
And it also, yes, it also doubles as a soccer field. So it does do multiple... So it does do multiple, multiple use of that.
What do you anticipate enrollment capacity to be at 2020?
The enrollment capacity?
For the campus?
It was based on the 2% growth projections, enrollment growth projections that were approved by KU.
Thank you.
Twenty thousand, oh, the number, yes, sorry, 20,000. Twenty twenty, twenty.
Anything else?
If I could just make a comment, I think that the inclusion and the acknowledgement of just needing the social spaces for students to congregate, I really think that's definitely a really good thing for the campus, being a Brooklyn College student for the last long time.
You don't need to.
I think that'll, you know, work well for the student body, because they're always looking for some places to just kind of like hang out before the classes, in between classes, and just...
That little library cafe is incredibly popular.
Yeah, it is. I think it's very crowded, very quickly.
Is that all, question? Okay.
Some years ago, Brooklyn decided to give up its separate schools and become School of Education and Liberal Arts and Sciences, and therefore, all of those separate deanships and so forth were ended. If they ever choose to go back to that model, what would happen to these individual administrative offices? Are they constructed in such a way that they can be flexed into something else?
They actually did choose to go back to that, and this fall is the first semester of having the...
Well, whether the faculty chose it is a question, but that isn't my question.
The master plan has been programmed such that it responds to the dean's concept. It's flexible enough, however, that should it go back to another concept, it can be achieved within the same building footprint. The level of this master plan is what I might call like a 30,000-foot-high level, and doesn't get down into the detail of individual room layouts or assignments. So there is the flexibility to go either way at this point.
Any other questions?
Frank, I just want to thank the college. I know that President Gould had to be somewhere else, but...
Raising money in California.
A good, the provost is here, and Steve Little, who's the VP, and it truly was a collaborative effort, and I think that having the ability to have a number of town hall meetings, and a number, a lot of input for both the faculty and the students, I think, ended up with a pretty good product here.
I agree, I would agree, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you...
Iris, can we just put a word of thanks to you, your staff, to Teresa, to Mariah, to Ross Lindis, to Amy May, to everyone on your staff who was essential for us, to Bob and Bob and you as well, and also from the Brooklyn College staff. Matt Schaefer on our, on our staff took the lead in doing so many things, and we're grateful to Jean and her team as well for giving us the blueprint to move forward for the next 15 to 20 years.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Well, there are no other questions, we will accept a motion to accept the amendment. Motion? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Extinctions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting today. Safe travels back.
Thank you.
That's fine. This call's also fine.